Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Stromberg. I'm with the Paulson Seakin Law Firm. I'm today's moderator of the forum, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of County Commissioners Chair Forum. If everybody could, and I just did this myself, turn off their cell phones. We are recording this event. We want to try to keep the extraneous noise to a minimum. First of all, I'd like to thank Johnson County Community College for hosting this event. This is a lovely facility, and we are grateful for the opportunity to be here together. I'd like to thank the Public Policy Council for coordinating today's event. For those of you who don't know, the Public Policy Council is a group collaboration of 10 local chambers, and it represents more than 5,000 Johnson County businesses. One of the things that the Public Policy Council does, if they put on forums like this, it also conducts voter education and does efforts to help voters find information on various candidates. And you can go to the council's website, www.vojoco.com. Last but not least, I'd like to introduce our candidates, and we're going to do that alphabetically today. The first candidate, Shirley Allen Brand. She currently serves on the Johnson County Board of Commissioners, and she represents the 6th District. She owns her own interior design firm and has also worked extensively in healthcare and senior living community industries. Welcome, Shirley. Next, I would like to welcome Mike Kelly. He has served as the Mayor of Roland Park since 2017. He's the founder of Climate Action KC and at the Hush Blackwell Firm, focusing on real estate design and construction litigation. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have Charlotte O'Hara. Currently, she serves on the Johnson County Board of Commissioners. She represents the 3rd District. She's a business owner, real estate investor, and has previously served in Kansas House of Representatives. Welcome, Charlotte.
Thank you.
And then finally, Ken Selzer is a certified public accountant. He is retired from a career in the insurance industry, and as many of you probably already know, he served as the Insurance Commissioner of the State of Kansas. Welcome, Ken. Thank you. All right, I'm going to give a brief overview on our format today. Each of the candidates is going to have two minutes for an opening statement. After our opening comments, we're going to rotate questions that were written by the Public Policy Council and get through as many of them as we can, as much as time allows us to. We will not be taking questions from the audience today. And because this is a forum and not a debate, we will not build in time for any type of rebuttal. At the conclusion of our question, each of the candidates will have one minute to make a closing statement before we adjourn. Now, prior to starting the forum, we created our order by drawing numbers out of a hat. And so our opening statement will begin with candidate number one, and candidate number one, based on our drawing, is Mike.
Well, Matt, thank you very much, and thank you to all the members of the Public Policy Council, all 10 chambers coming together to put this event together. I really appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts and visions for the future of Johnson County with you. My name is Mayor Mike Kelly, Mayor of Roland Park and Johnson County native. Johnson County was a great place to grow up. It's a great place to work. It's a great place to live, to raise your family, to retire, and everything in between. That doesn't happen by accident, and it's not guaranteed. The leaders that we choose and the policies that they put in place will set the course for Johnson County for the next generation. I'm proud to be raising my family with my wife, Elizabeth, our kids Jenny and George in Roland Park because of the amazing opportunities that that provides. Whereas mayor, I've served since 2017 and in that time have shown executive experience. In those five years, we've cut taxes twice, where we have lowered our mill levy by 15%. We're going to lower it more this year. We've also fully funded and expanded our police department, including the K-9 unit, bike unit, and other activities that build bonds of trust within our community. I've also partnered with more than 100 local elected officials and shown how we can grow our economy, but also mitigate the impacts of changing climate. Johnson County demands leaders who are going to rise above partisan rhetoric and focus on the issues that matter most to Johnson Countyans. Look forward to talking with you today about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Based on our random drawings, Charlotte, you're next.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to be here. I have been in Johnson County for 50 years, and I have been part and parcel of building Johnson County. I was a general contractor in the 80s and the 90s and into the 2000s. Our single-family homes is the foundation and the strength of our community because people that own their homes are invested in this community, and this is what we want to continue to focus on as we go forward. We have multiple issues in our county. Since 2013, our budget has doubled from $815 million to $1.651 billion. This is unsustainable. We cannot keep up this level of spending. And the major problem is that we build our budget simply by taking last year's budget and adding on to it. We need to look at a zero-based budgeting process. We need to be tearing these budgets apart and determine how we can lower our costs and provide services in the most effective and efficient manner. I currently own two industrial buildings in Olathe. I understand property taxes. I am paying over $2 a square foot on my 40-year-old metal buildings. And in there, the new million-square-foot buildings are paying $16 a square foot. We have to take a look at this equality issue of taxing. The Board of County Commissioners has the right to veto taxing from the finance districts. We have never vetoed one. We currently have $2.8 billion of real estate under these tax shelters. So I would appreciate your consideration on August the 2nd, and I will be there to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Next, we have Shirley.
Thank you, Matt. Hello, and I want to thank the Johnson County Policy Council for hosting this forum and giving me the opportunity to appear before you today. My name is Shirley Allen Brand, and I'm the Commissioner for the 6th District in Johnson County. I was born and raised in Johnson County, and no one in this race has deeper roots and commitment to this county than I do. My dad was a mayor. My cousin, Uncle Freddie, was just Johnson County Sheriff for 47 years. I too have served the city of Lenexa and Olathe. It's my belief it's an honor and a privilege to serve our community. I've raised my children here and now my grandchildren. As a businesswoman, I have successfully owned and operated award-winning healthcare communities. I have been dedicated to civic service for over the past 30 years. I currently serve on the Commission of Aging Audit Committee, Workforce Housing Subcommittee, Two Zoning Boards, Airports, and Vice Chair. I look forward to addressing the important issues facing our county. As county chair, I will serve all residents. It will be my job to work my fellow commissioners and service convenor and a facilitator to all the residents, businesses, local government, staff, and stakeholders to develop priorities and policies to the direction of our county government. This happens by doing your homework, listening, and looking at all sides for possible solutions with as many partners as it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Ken?
Thank you, Matt, and thank you to the chambers. Truly, truly appreciate being here. Truly appreciate being on this same table with the other candidates here. Some of you know my background. In a very brief nutshell, grew up in central Kansas, went to K-State, got a good education. Thank you. Well, got married, married to Jayhawk, and I'm still married to her after 41 years. So think about that. I can negotiate. So I have two lovely daughters that live here in Johnson County, one in Roland Park, one in Olathe. I still live in Leewood. I'm very much embedded here. My first taste, my first taste of nonpartisan politics, which is what this is, was in Fairway, Kansas, 26-years-old, bought a house, getting married, bought a house. I show up at the Fairway City Council meeting, and wouldn't you know, I'm the only one in the audience. Unlike today, where we got a lot of good people who are interested, I was the only one that was interested in the property taxes. They were going to discuss the budget that night, and the property tax rate. And I was interested in property taxes. And the mayor looks out at me and says, "What are you doing here?" And I says, "I'm interested in what you're doing with my taxes." So three months later, he calls me up and says, "Will you fill out an unexpired term? Your councilperson has moved out of the county or moved out of the ward." And so, so I served then as a Fairway City Councilperson at the beginning of my career because I showed interest in property taxes and making sure that the county or the city was being efficient with my taxes. We're going to do the same thing here. Absolutely the same thing. We, we have done a lot in the community over the years. We've got a lot of good things going. I'll just rattle off a few quick ones. I'm a CPA. My original trade. I've been your Insurance Commissioner. I've been a business executive. I serve on the Leewood Foundation. I've co-authored a book. I'm in the K-State Accounting Hall of Fame. I'm in the Blue Valley Educational Foundation Hall of Fame along with my wife. I've served as president of my Rotary Club. I see some fellow Rotarians here today. Thank you. I've, I've been selected as the person this, just this past year for outstanding dedication and service to my Rotary Club, so I look forward to the discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Now, we begin the question-answer portion of the forum. Just a reminder, candidates, you have two minutes to answer these first questions that we ask. And the first question will be to Charlotte at this point. You'll all get a chance to answer the same question. And the question being, as a candidate, what are your top three priorities for Johnson County?
Thank you. I answered this on the survey, and it's local control, local control, local control. And one of the major things that we have to focus on is a mental health residential crisis center. Right now, the crisis center that we're using is the jail, and this is the most inefficient and ineffective method of addressing this critical issue within our county. The other, the other issue is that we need to make sure that our funding for the sheriff is adequate. I've told many people that my son-in-law works for the sheriff's department, and we currently have 51 positions that are open. And the reason that they are open is that the sheriff doesn't have enough flexibility within his budget to meet the demands of the market as far as salaries. So we train these recruits, and then they go to other departments. And the problem is, is that when you have 51 positions open, that that requires mandatory overtime, and that puts a lot of stress on the families and the officers. And then three is property taxes. Our property taxes are some of the highest in the region, and we are pricing our middle class and our retirees out of the, out of our community. In fact, I was talking to a cashier a couple of weeks ago, and I said, "Do you live in Johnson County?" And she said, "Yes, I do." And I said, "Well, I'm running for chair, and I'd be very honored to earn your vote." And she said, "Well, what are you?" That's the first thing anybody asks you when you go door-to-door. By the way, I love going door-to-door. That is my passion. I love it. Anyway, she goes, "What are you?" And I said, "I am a conservative Republican." And she said, "Thank God." She said, "I'm a Democrat, but I am done. My house payment has gone from $1,080 three years ago to $1,400, and I had to get a second job in order to make my house payment." And this is a direct quote from her. She said, "Johnson County no longer wants people like me in this county." Thank you.
Shirley, you're next. The question again is, what are your top three priorities for Johnson County?
Sure, thank you. My top three priorities are to provide high-quality and vital county services to the residents. The recent survey that was completed, set, the recent survey that was completed, 97% of the people that lived here said that this is a great place to work, live, and play. Public safety is also a priority, parks, libraries, and expanding the mental health programs. No one group can do this on their own. It's going to take a collaboration of cities, chambers, economic development, schools, and private sectors to get this done. We also need to focus on the workforce development with businesses, education partners, business partners, the workforce shortage. That includes transportation, housing, and training. We need to partner with Johnson County Community College, having over 2,700 different certifications for training. Those are important to have great partners that. The other thing is to protect your tax dollars by maintaining the AAA bond rating, rolling back the mill levy when possible. Also, taking a look at opportunities to consolidate when it's necessary. The $28 million that was saved on Turkey Creek wastewater because of looking at consolidations. This is important, and it will bring services and efficiencies to our county. Those are my three priorities.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken. What are your top three priorities for Johnson County?
And thank you, Matt. I'll start with my vision. My vision is a clean, safe place for people to raise their families, work, and eventually retire. We have to start with clean and safe. Fiscal responsibility, fiscal responsibility among my three priorities, fiscal responsibility. We have to stretch our tax dollar further. We need to make sure every dollar spent here in Johnson County is spent for the betterment of Johnson County. If it doesn't pass that test, we don't collect it and we don't spend it. It's your dollars that we're dealing with. Safe and secure neighborhoods. As you know, the sheriff's department is underneath, is funded by the county. Having safe and secure neighborhoods is our absolutely number-one priority. Education opportunities, job opportunities are really, really high, but it's got to be a clean and safe neighborhood to begin, and secure neighborhood to begin with. We're going to provide better accountability in government. There will be more rigorous accountability measures. That includes a beefed-up audit department. That includes people demanding a return on investment for your tax dollars. There will be far more accountability, far more transparency. So I think a lot of good things here in my three priorities.
Thank you. Mike, you are now our last person on this question. What are your top three priorities for Johnson County?
Thank you very much, Matt. I mentioned that Johnson County is a fantastic place to live and work, and that's because of the quality, top-notch services that are provided by the county and by the employees that really form the backbone of the county. We want to make sure that we not only protect those foundations, but that we're willing to innovate and provide those services and more for the future of Johnson County. That means making sure that we take advantage of the opportunities of the day. And folks, you all recognize that we're at an inflection point. We are at a time now where there is great opportunity to shape Johnson County with a vision for the future, not only with the funding that's available to the American Rescue Plan, but with the money that's available through the bipartisan infrastructure bill. We have an opportunity now to leverage partnership with different levels of government to build that infrastructure for the future. Not putting a Band-Aid on the infrastructure from our grandparents, but really building the infrastructure that's going to allow economic opportunities for our grandkids. I'm going to set the tone and priority that protects our public schools. That's what draws a lot of the business folks to Johnson County. And once we provide that fantastic public education to our, to our students, that makes them competitive anywhere across the country. They can go to New York or Dallas, California. If we're going to compete with the beaches or the Metropolitan Museum of Art, we've got to give them that fantastic quality of life. We got to make sure that there's great opportunities for them to work. That's why I want to be a partner with the business community in making sure that we provide those opportunities for careers, not just jobs, but careers of the future in key growth industries like architecture, engineering, construction, biosciences, the animal health corridor that runs through Johnson County. We want to continue to support that community and really bring about this quality of life for the next generation.
Thank you. Now, we've heard a little bit about this from the candidates and the prior answers. But this next question, Shirley will be the first to respond, and the question is, what is your philosophy and approach to managing the county budget?
Well, first of all, I think it takes great communication skills. You need to, well, first of all, the budget itself is $1.6 billion, which is proposed for 2023, and I think that you have to work with your leadership team. You need to pull everyone together to look at the budget. The county manager is responsible for that budget, and so she will bring to you that budget as you take a look at that. It's important to, looking for my note cards. So working together as a team, pulling that budget together. Look at the needs for the county. You know, the county is rated in the top 90% of being a great place to work and play. Our parks have a gold star rating. Our, our, our museum has a rating of a national accreditation. So it's important to keep those things going. But again, communication, audits, working together as a team, and working with your commissioners and pulling all that together, to me, is critical.
Thank you, Shirley. Ken, you're up next, and the question again is, what is your philosophy and approach to managing the county budget?
I think I'm the only one sitting at the table here who has actually reduced the government budget and got more out of government. I'll fill that in in just a little bit. I've done the same in business. I've had incredible success in the business world, incredible success in the government world as your Insurance Commissioner in Topeka. I actually, over two years, reduced the operating budget by 15% with an eye on better service. We were going to do it with better service. It just shows the inefficiency that exists in most governments. It's not easy to do. You have to stay focused. My philosophy is always, when somebody leaves or retires or moves on to another job, do we need that job? Can we combine that job with another job? This isn't rocket science. It works, and they do it, we do it in the private sector all the time. It doesn't get applied very often to the public sector. By several objective measures, we improved customer service while we were doing that. We need to either keep customer service where it's at or improve it, and we can stretch the dollar while we're doing that. That has an impact on what we charge you to fund government. We can stretch your tax dollar further. I want to just let everybody know and remind you again, I am a CPA. I have a financial background. I've spent a lot of time in insurance. But I started my career as a CPA, as an auditor, always, always looking for enhancements to performance, getting a better return on investment. We can do that in government. I've proved it can happen. We'll apply that same approach here. Thank you.
Okay, Mike. Or thank you, Ken. Mike, you're next.
Well, thank you. When you, when you talk about the budget, yeah, the budget in Johnson County has grown. We've also added 100,000 people in the last 10 years. We also have had to fill the gaps of the coffers that have been raided by politicians from the brownback area. But Johnson County, they stepped up and made sure that we provided those services to our most vulnerable, like disability services, like aging services, like mental health services. So while the budget is growing, we're also looking to provide services to more people who come in to Johnson County, and we need to be ready for that. That doesn't mean that we don't need to be efficient and effective and find ways to innovatively provide those kind of services to the residents of Johnson County, making sure that if there's opportunities for partnership at different layers of government, whether it be taking advantage of federal opportunities or partnership with state partners, or maybe looking at others in the metropolitan region for partnering with our cities. And we've got a track record of doing that in Roland Park. We've got a track record of doing that at Climate Action KC. And I'm ready to bring that track record and take that philosophy of working with the staff at Johnson County, the internal and external auditors, the great staff leads to help put together a really robust budget process and finding ways that we can provide the best services possible, and then also be mindful of the tax burden that we are putting on the shoulders of our community. I've got a record of lowering the mill levy by 15% in Roland Park without sacrificing services because we're able to broaden that tax base by welcoming new businesses into our community. We're going to do the same thing at the county level.
Thank you. Charlotte, you're going to close this question out for us. Just as a reminder, what is your philosophy and approach to managing the county budget?
Well, I think number one is that the Board of County Commissioners has to become a policymaking board. Right now, it's a rubber stamp, and the people of Johnson County elect the Board of County Commissioners to lead this community, not to follow the county manager. And what we need to demand as policymaking board is, again, that we tear apart all of these budgets, have the department heads tear apart their budgets, and build them from the ground up, zero-based budgeting, so that we can ascertain as to what is working and what is not working. And then take those programs that are working and add to them. But if this program isn't working, such as using the jail as our mental health crisis center, and that is a most cost-effective method of approaching this idea, and it does not work. So we need to be looking and working with the sheriff's department. We need to be looking at the health department and say, "Hey, you beat up for COVID. Now it's time to roll your costs back to 2019. We don't want you in control of our life. We want you to provide the health services that we choose, but not that you demand that we, that we use." So the health department, the sheriff's department, the district attorney's apartment, we, I mean, the wastewater district. That's a tsunami of debt that is coming our way, and we need to be looking at this money that we have from the federal government and see if there's some way that we can use it to pay down some of our debt. I mean, we have the Nelson wastewater plant that was going to cost $425 million when I came in in January 2021. It is now at $574 million and increased 30% per year in cost estimates. It's, we got a lot, a lot of work ahead of us.
Thank you. Ken, you're going to get the first crack at the next question. There has been much discussion about metro area regionalism. Please explain your views on regional cooperation.
Yes, I'd love to. Thank you, Matt. We need to be a part of things where we can lead. We need to lead. Johnson County has been a follower for so long. We have, we have great people here. We have great, great jobs. We have great education. We are so out front in so many ways. If we're going to be a part of a bigger metro area, which we are, we need to lead. We need to step up and lead. It takes somebody who thinks they need to lead the metro area. We, there is, there are cooperation issues, but we're not going to be sucked up into the metro area and follow what, what somebody else decides for us. We're out front. We're going to stay out front. I want to talk about innovation just a little bit, if I've got a little bit of time. We need to think more innovatively in so many things. I want to give a humble two examples. We started in Blue Valley Educational Foundation. We started an innovative teacher award 18 years ago, 18 years ago, trying to recognize teachers who are doing well, who want to step up and be examples for others, innovation, recognizing innovation and how they engage students. My kids went to private, and they went to public schools. One did, one did each. I got, I have two daughters, as I told you earlier. We need to think innovatively like that. Innovation is a big, big issue here, and we can be innovative when we work in a, in a regional sense. We can be innovative when we work in a very local, local neighborhood sense. We can be innovative, more innovative, when we work at the county. I'll give you other examples some other time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike. Just to repeat the question one more time for the audience. There has been much discussion about metro area regionalism. Please explain your views on regional cooperation.
Johnson County continues to thrive as part of a thriving metropolitan region that is growing. And Johnson County needs to partner with the region, and the region needs to partner with Johnson County. You think about the import that we have with workers every day. You know that there's more jobs than a two-mile radius, College of Metcalf, than there are in downtown Kansas City. We are bringing more people into Johnson County, so we need to be able to focus together on those issues that go beyond the borders of Johnson County. And I am glad that we have put the border war behind us. Who would have thought that when KU and Mizzou stopped playing basketball against each other, that we could soften this border? And I, I think that it's important that we recognize that a rising tide is going to lift all boats. This amazing new Panasonic facility that's going to come to Johnson County is going to be a great thing for Kansas City, Missouri. A World Cup coming to Kansas City, Missouri is going to be great for Johnson County. It's not a zero-sum game, folks. We can realize that residual growth- It's not a zero-sum game, folks. We can realize that residual growth is going to be good for all of our businesses because we recognize our economy does not stop at our preordained jurisdictional borders. We want a metro region that continues to thrive in initiatives like the JCPPC or KC Rising or the KC ADC are good tools that we can utilize to continue to take advantage of that collective growth and not compete with Kansas City, Missouri, but compete with Nashville, Austin, Oklahoma City, Dallas. We need to be a leader for the region, and the, the region can be a leader for America.
Thank you, Charlotte. Uh, there has been much discussion about metro area regionalism. Uh, please explain your views on regional cooperation.
I think that we need to focus again on local control. Uh, I disagree that the border war is over, obviously. We, uh, offered a billion dollars to Panasonic from the state level, and, uh, DeSoto is, uh, on the cusp of approving a tax income finance district that will increase the gravy train another two hundred million dollars. And then they will come back for an industrial revenue bond, which will exempt the construction materials, the fixtures and equipment of that, of that plant, uh, from all sales tax, which is approximately another two hundred million dollars. This is too much for one company. We fail to remember that small businesses and most of your members of the Chamber of Commerce, they are small business owners. It is a small business, uh, community that is the engine of growth, not only here, but across our great nation. And we need to be focused on that. Um, an example of, uh, another issue with regionalism is that Kansas City Area Transit Authority has found the power to come over to Johnson County, use eminent domain to transfer private property to private developers for high-rise apartment complexes, issue conduit bonds, and those, uh, apartment complexes will be exempt from property taxes for the, for the length of the bond up to thirty years. This is not good for our community. It is not good. We need to be focusing on how to continue our strong foundation of, of home ownership. I have five children that live in the area. One of my, my, uh, next youngest daughter lives in Miami County, and her husband works for the sheriff's department. All of my children live here. I have seven grandchildren. I want my grandchildren to be able to afford to invest in this community and own a home. And I think that that is really what we need to focus on is local control and continued strength of our communities.
Thank you. Shirley, you'll get the final word. What are your views on regional cooperation?
Thank you. Um, if I was vice chair, I would continue working with partners, um, with the different regions for four. We've done a lot of things in Johnson County. We've done a lot of great things. Uh, we did that with COVID. Um, you saw the partnerships working together, not only on a county level, but also within the core, but also we went outside the county. We worked with American Healthcare Association, bringing people and experts in from all over. So those are important. I'm very proud to be able to work with companies like Panasonic coming in. They're bringing over, you know, they're bringing over four thousand jobs into the area. You take a look at that, you see what's going on with Garmin, just made an announcement of seven hundred employees in the, in Alata, Kansas. It's important not only to work within the core and also, um, partner with the outside, but also to work within our own business community and provide infrastructure and, um, to our own community as well.
Thank you. Now, we've gotten a little bit of insight on the next question based on prior responses. But Mike, I'm going to ask you, what do you believe the role of the county should be in economic development?
I think the county can set the tone and priority for development, um, for the, and with the, the business community. And I think welcoming opportunities for new business into Johnson County and also expanding business that exists within Johnson County, um, can be done with help from the county. One of the, the stories, and Shirley just mentioned it, uh, Garmin is a great story. You know, that started at New Century Airport. Two guys wanted to put GPS in an airplane. Somebody told them no, so they said, oh, good. I'll go and start my own company and look what that's done. Uh, and now I, I believe it's nine hundred new jobs, all can pay ninety-five thousand dollars plus. So yeah, absolutely. Let's support the small businesses in our community by helping them become bigger businesses. I think that it's a great opportunity, uh, to make sure that we're also protecting, uh, the tone for public education. We're providing that great quality of life. Also, that's going to draw business into our, our community, making sure that we protect our resources like our parks and recreation services, like libraries, uh, things, uh, like our fantastic, uh, mental health, aging, disability services. We can be a partner with the business community by making sure that we remain one of the most attractive counties in America to come, uh, and grow your business. And I do believe that the Panasonic facility is going to be catalytic for the western part of Johnson County. And while we did provide incentive at the state level to bring that business to Johnson County, it wasn't generating revenue beforehand, but the residual growth that that's going to be able to bring is great for the community in DeSoto, and I think it's going to have fantastic impacts elsewhere throughout the county.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you.
You're up next.
Yes, thank you. Oh, there's so much to talk about. Um, so Garmin, this is, this is an interesting story. Um, Jared Burrell was one of the founders of Garmin, and he actually worked at King Radio in Alata. King Radio was a very successful, uh, organization, a business of grow. And then they spun off a lot of entrepreneurs, lots and lots. And I'm thrilled to hear that they are expanding and that they're going to be adding another seven to nine hundred employees. But I will tell you, um, that as a small business owner, the idea that Panasonic is going to be bringing in four thousand jobs and the average pay is going to be fifty thousand dollars, they are going to be competing directly with my small manufacturing company that I'm in partnership with my son. Our unemployment rate is at one point seven percent. We are at full employment. There's no way that we can expand our workforce to absorb four thousand jobs. This is going to be stealing workers from existing businesses, and we're going to be, we're going to, we're going to be injured. We're going to, we are going to suffer trying to fill our positions. And then we're going to be in competition with a company that's going to have at least one point three billion dollars of public money in it. You have to understand that these incentives, they have been looked at at post-audit. You should go out and look at the twenty thirteen post-audit review, and it states how P and HBIT are absolute total failures. There's no accountability. And we need to be focused on providing services for this community instead of thinking that the government can create economic development. That's just not true.
Thank you, Shirley. What, what do you believe the role of the county should be in economic development?
Thank you. Um, as a chair, you know, um, I would support the mayors and the city council members are elected by their cities. It's their responsibility as they look at their city to decide what development they want to do. They open public meetings, they vote within their community and decide. Then at that point, it comes before, um, the county commission. It would be my job to help partner with continuing providing programs through Johnson County Community College, um, by having, um, um, different programs to help people better themselves. Johnson County workforce, continue to work on issues that we can partner with, not only the chamber, of economic development and partners to help provide transportation, daycare. That, to me, is the role, is to do a partnership. It's not, I would be a supportive of the, um, of the mayors and also the city council members. I think it's important to see the economic growth of Panasonic as of Garmin. I was at the first groundbreaking Garmin had with the Alata Chamber. It was an exciting day. When you see those things coming to Johnson County, they're no longer being shipped or made over in Japan or China or someplace else. They're being manufactured here. So in the long run, it's going to reduce the savings of transportation and getting those shipments here. So I, that's how I would, um, respond to those questions.
Thank you. Ken, you get the last crack at this. What do you believe the role of the county, public county should be in economic development?
Let's take our opportunities and build on them. A person who's got a business background, a business executive background is well-suited to do that. A person with a financial background is well-suited to do that. Our county is always going to grow because we have safe and secure neighborhoods. We have great educational opportunities, and we have well-paying jobs. People are going to continue to come here, just like I did when I got out of K-State many years ago, forty-five years ago. I got out of K-State and the best paying job I had was right here in Johnson County. That's why I came here. I stayed here because of the opportunities for my kids. One went to private, I told you earlier. One went to private, one went to public school. Great job opportunities, great living atmosphere. We want Johnson County to stay that way. It will always be a magnet in the region. We know people come in from all over Kansas because we have those opportunities. Uh, we know people come from the six states surrounding. We know people move in here from the coast. Johnson County will always be a great place to raise a family and educate your kids and, and get a well-paying job. We're going to continue that. We have, we have a responsibility to continue that in a well-managed way. One of the issues we have in the county is our rural development and a plan for rural development. The Johnson County Commission last updated, as best I can tell, its rural development plan in two thousand and six. What is going on? We've got huge changes since then. Can we not bring our people together? Can we not give our people a voice and let them be a part of the longer-term view of it so that things fall in place better in a more organized manner? That's called thinking strategically. I will do that. I will bring that to the table as a businessman's perspective that has proven it works in the private sector, that has proven it works in the public sector. A lot of good things can come from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving to the next question. Charlotte, you'll get the first chance at it. What do you believe the takeaways for the county commission should be from the COVID nineteen pandemic experience?
Um, I think that unfortunately, we did not pay attention to, to what was really happening. And it's very early on came crystal clear that the, um, segment of the population that was most at risk were people seventy years of age and older and those with comorbidities, especially, um, obesity, heart problems, et cetera, et cetera. Instead, we cast our net too wide, in my opinion, and we, we put in draconian public health orders of shutting down businesses and, uh, and, uh, requiring masks in schools and shutting down the schools. It, this, this, uh, the, the repercussions from this, uh, mental health, uh, issues, it's, it is a huge problem, and it comes from our response to COVID. And I, uh, example, our daycare centers, even after we rolled back our public health order on schools that they did not have to mask, our county health department was sending out letters to daycare centers with language that, that looked like that it was a requirement for them to be masking two-year-olds and older. And it, this is damaging to our young, young children. Uh, you can look at the studies that the delay in language, uh, social, uh, social interaction. I mean, this was, this, this was the wrong method of addressing this problem. We should have been focused on the vulnerable populations, and we should have allowed our economy to continue to function.
Thank you. Shirley, uh, what do you believe the takeaways are for the county commission, uh, from the COVID nineteen pandemic experience?
Well, first of all, I think I have a different perspective, um, being in the healthcare field and understanding the importance of, uh, science and physicians. I feel like the county did a great job. It was, it was always the, um, mission of the commission to provide vaccines, education, training, and to accomplish those things. Um, you know, attending, uh, attending the commission meetings, I got very frustrated with hearing everyone complain about, what are we going to do? Get something done? Well, I thought it was time to roll up your sleeves and let's get it done. So I, along with several others, went out and started contacting people to get them vaccinated. I worked with Dr. Oriella to set up, um, sites. I, I had, we were trying to get people vaccinated that lived in their home, didn't have access to transportation. We were able to work with IV. Then at that point, I said, let's start going out and working with our assisted living and skilled nursing homes. We were able to do that. We went out and were able to get people vaccinated between a hundred to three thousand people at one time. We had roundtable discussions with American Healthcare Association to help us do better. You know, did we do something wrong? I'm sure we did, but I still rely upon the medical experts. There is physicians that still meet from all the area hospitals, and they get together and they have discussions. What have we done now? We have put into place an action review plan of what we can do better. One thing I learned during that roundtable discussion with American Healthcare, and there were people from all over in different states, Johnson County was at the top of getting people vaccinated. That was my mission, get everybody vaccinated that wanted to get vaccinated, and then, then reduce, you know, limit the mask mandate at that point. So do I want another mask mandate? No, but I do want to follow the direction of our healthcare providers and our physicians.
Thank you. Uh, next, we move to Ken. What do you believe the takeaways for the county commission should be from the COVID nineteen?
Let's do what was just said without locking down business, without locking down schools. The county health board, which is the Board of County Commissioners, should be recommending, should be educating, not mandating, not locking down business. We know after the fact that we had significant learning loss amongst our kids. We can, we can be more active and better educators, better recommenders. We don't need to mandate. I, I want you to please go away with that thought. We are going to function going forward. Missouri did that in a very nice way. We had a lot of issues during our shutdowns here. Uh, we have to be sensitive to people with special needs, people who are at higher risk. We will always be sensitive to that. We won't have business lockdowns. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, you have the last word on this question. What do you believe the takeaways for the county commission should be from the COVID nineteen pandemic experience?
We, we all recognize that we were affected by this pandemic. No more so than the people who lost loved ones to the pandemic. Twelve hundred Johnson Canyons lost their lives to this pandemic. And I can tell you, being an executive during this time wasn't easy. There's a lot of learning that goes into that and some experience that, uh, you can build upon. Now, when, when the pandemic hit, we in Roland Park wanted to take a, a leadership role. So as mayor, I made sure that we were the first city that provided free PPE to our residents, to our businesses and to our shoppers. We're also the first city in the four thirty-five loop to push for and to host a testing site at the Roland Park Community Center. We also were the first city to utilize our ARPA funding to provide free at-home test kits to residents, all done in the idea that we wanted to do our part to keep our community healthy and safe, to keep our kids in schools, and to keep our businesses open. The Johnson County Board of Commissioners has a lot of responsibilities, but it is a massive responsibility to be the board of public health in Johnson County. And your next chair is going to be the chair of the Board of Public Health. Frankly, there could be life or death decisions that come before, uh, this board. We want to make sure that we have somebody who does listen to professional medical advice, who trusts science and data, and that will make those best decisions utilizing the great information available, not only from the public health officials at the county level, but also utilizing partnership with the chief medical officers, the various health systems throughout the metropolitan area, making sure that we're making decisions and the buck's got to stop with the elective office. But that we're going to make decisions with full knowledge, uh, and in the best interest of the health of our community.
Thank you. Moving to the next question. Uh, Shirley, you'll be the first person to address the question. And we had asked some And we had had some comments on this priorities, but what role do you believe the county can play, if any, in addressing the local worker shortage?
Um, well, I think the county can do a lot and I work on a subcommittee with two other commissioners on a sub, subcommittee for workforce. Again, I think it's partnerships. It's having relationships with, um, Johnson County Community College, with, um, Johnson County Workforce. You can go and get your GED. You can go take a certification to better yourself. There's opportunities to be a contractor. So there's all these opportunities out there. I think it's important that we, um, work together on that. Um, I think it also, the workforce also has to do with housing. It's very important. Part of the subcommittee that we're working on not only addresses homelessness, but also addresses housing. Housing is a key component to the workforce. So we need to work with our cities. We need to partner with them to see how we can do that better. You know, the baby boomers and retirement groups, it's important, I still, with the budget, I support um, having a senior rollback and I will continue to work with the legislators to try to get that done. We've accomplished some. But I think we can do a lot better. Providing training, um, I think is important. Also daycare and transit is important with that as well. So that would be something that I would be, um, supporting as I'm doing now on the subcommittee I'm working on.
Thank you. Ken, what role do you believe the county can play, if any, in addressing the local worker shortage?
I think the county can do a lot. We can be way more innovative than we have. We can do a lot of things. And I asked people in this room, I asked the people at this table, what have you done that's been innovative? That might apply elsewhere. I'll give you that tiny little example again from the insurance department just four years ago. Uh, six years ago, when I first came in, how, how we sat together with business leaders, with, uh, industry leaders, with chamber people, with, uh, in Topeka, with all kinds of people, academics, trying to figure out a way we could bring workforce to the insurance industry. And you know what? We did it. We were innovative. We were thoughtful. And it wouldn't have happened without a business background, knowing what it takes to fill those jobs, knowing what it takes, what kind of skill sets, knowing that it takes certifications in some cases. We made it happen. I simply ask you folks to think about who can bring the most innovative ideas to a very real problem here in Johnson County. We'll do it. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, you're next. Uh, you know, what role do you believe the county can play in addressing the worker shortage?
Well, I can play a big role. Um, as the founder and chairman of Climate Action KC, over a hundred elected officials, businesses, nonprofits working together, one of the things we started was the Building Energy Exchange. And as part of that, with zero taxpayer dollars funding this, we were able to create a contractor accelerator that helps NDE and DVE contractors learn the skills and trades, uh, to work in high-performing buildings. An emerging industry that's going to continue to tap into the AEC community here in Johnson County and throughout the metropolitan region. So I give that example, but the county can also make sure that we're leveraging our fantastic public school system and making sure that we are partnering with that public school system for opportunities like internships and externships. By identifying the next great workforce from the county and for the county. I think we also can look at workforce development and I know that all of you are seeing this workforce crisis that we're facing in this country. Hundred eighty thousand jobs throughout the metro region that are unfilled right now. Thirty percent of, uh, daycares didn't reopen after pandemic. A lot of families that I know are deciding how they're going to go back to work or how they're going to split time or can they do a virtual option? So that's something that the county and region frankly can and must address uh, as we look towards making sure that we have a robust and, and full workforce. But the county also has the Enterprise Center of Johnson. An opportunity to make sure that we are fostering that creativity, that entrepreneurial spirit that continues to build Johnson County. And by doing so, identify those next great businesses from Johnson County and support them as they're going to continue to be the life of Johnson County's economy.
Charlotte, you'll get the last word on the question. What role do you believe the county can play, if any, in addressing the local worker shortage?
Well, this is a nationwide issue and, uh, we don't have a magic bullet at the county, but our responsibility is to look at our budget and make sure that we are not burdening our taxpayers to the point that they no longer want to live here or can afford to live here. This is, this is our focus, is to be efficient and effective in providing services. The other issue is that we need to send a message loud and clear to our health department that there is a huge difference between recommendations and requirements that they are sending out to these daycare centers. I'm getting emails from people that are going, what do you mean you're requiring my two-year-old to be masked because there was a, there was a COVID case in his classroom? Parents are done with that. They are done with that. It is disrupting people's ability to work. And we have to make it clear that these are recommendations and not requirements. And I will tell you, I have read those letters and they look, and they are very pointed in. These, if this isn't done, then this is going to happen. And we have to have our county manager, direct our county health director to make sure that the, the daycare centers understand that no, these are recommendations. As far as the workforce development, um, yes, we have the community college, wonderful asset. We have our public schools. We have wonderful private schools. But that is not creating more people for these jobs. And it is, and I, I know, I mean, I'm dealing with this on an everyday basis and trying to find someone to, to fill positions at our manufacturing plant and everyone's in the same boat. We don't have the magic bullet that we will work to, what will bring services in the most efficient and effective manner.
All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to the next question, Ken, you'll lead us off. How would you describe your leadership style?
It's real straightforward. I lead by example. I lead collaboratively. I try to bring people in. I try to get them involved. And you know what? The biggest thing I think that's a asset for me is I always look for people's strength. How can we build on someone's strength? That's why I was successful in the business world. That's why I was successful in the government world, looking for what things people bring to the table and build on it. If you dwell on their negatives, uh, you won't go anywhere. Build on their strengths. And that, that has worked hugely successfully in both sectors throughout my entire career. We will continue that.
Mike, you're next on this one. How would you describe your leadership style?
Well, uh, I'd say I like to lead by example. I want to make sure that the effort that I am putting out um, is visible and then can be reflected by those that I work with. I, I want to find partnerships where, where they're possible. I want to listen and actively listen uh, to folks and make sure that all ideas have an opportunity to come to the table. I want to set the tone of priority of the teamwork. Uh, and I want to bring that to the county too, because you think about the great asset that the county has. That's the four thousand employees that work at the county. Elected officials are going to come, they're going to go. But really that institutional knowledge that is built and, and learned in the people who work for the county is the value that the county has to provide these great services to its residents. So I want to make sure when they come before the county commission, that they are treated as teammates, that they're not put through deposition, that they're not put into the stocks, but instead that they are listened to and, and felt a, a part of the process. And that they can, uh, really have buy-in, uh, and dive into that real public service and that purpose advantage that working for the county provides. I, I want to make sure also that we keep things civil and that we don't let rhetoric drive the day. I won't be afraid in a meeting to shut down conversation that has become unproductive or untruthful.
Thank you. Uh, Charlotte, you're next. What, what, how would you describe your leadership style?
Um, well, in my businesses and, and in my functions as the county commissioner for the third district, I am clear, I am concise, I am tenacious. I'll give you an example. Um, Coleman Plant, hundred sixty-fourth emission. That, uh, plant had been sitting there abandoned since nineteen ninety. And a great hue and cry for the past thirty years, oh my gosh, we need to do something about this. And the sheriff wanted it down and the, um, ambulance services, everyone wanted it, wanted it down, wanted it down. So I really didn't know anything about it until my son told me that my grandson had been going down to this, this abandoned warehouse. I go, what? So I go and I investigate it. I get the Shawnee Mission Post to come out and do an article on it. I get Channel Nine News to come out and do a tour with Captain, um, Captain Levin and with the sheriff's department. And all of a sudden, the light was shown on the problem. And this warehouse was right behind Blue Valley Middle School. The kids had a path beaten down to it. And I mean, there are holes in the roof, this big, and these kids were climbing all over it. And why someone had not been killed in the thirty years that it had been abandoned, I have no idea. But the good news is, is that I kept bringing it up, bringing it up, bringing it up. It's down and it came in under budget. And that is an example of my leadership. My door will be open. We will make this, uh, county commission a policymaking board and we will make sure that our policies are carried out by the county manager and the department heads.
Thank you. Shirley, you'll close out this question for us. How would you describe your leadership style?
Thank you. Uh, well, my leadership style, first of all, I respect the professional county staff. I also respect our city officials. My leadership style is to get things done, to roll my sleeves up, do my homework and bring a group of people together around the table. And let's talk about what your, what your issues are. And how do we work with the staff, work with those individuals to come up with the best possible solution? That's how I've done my hospital work. I've worked, I've been a part of not only national committees, but also local, and I've done that within hospitals and my, also my own business. It's important to me that you take a look at, we've talked a lot about the budget and I'm going to talk about that a little bit. Because to me, that's leadership. You look at the twenty twenty-three budget, a one-point-six-billion-dollar budget. You look at that budget and you say sixty percent of that goes for public safety. The rest of it's for taking care of our streets and other, um, commodities like roadworks, airports. The most important thing to me is there's also a capital improvement plan. When we talk about things, we talk about good leadership. You've got five, ten, fifteen years looking at that capital improvement plan. And to me, that's a sign of a good leadership, working together, pulling those people together and using their expertise to help do a better job as a leader.
Thank you. Now, you guys have been doing a really good job of sticking to your time limits. So I'm going to give you guys a little bit extra time in what this sheet tells me I'm supposed to.
Uh-oh.
These are supposed to be one-minute responses on this last question. Mike, you're going to lead us off. That should be a fun one. What do you believe most distinguishes you from your opponents in this race?
Well, um, honestly, I think it's the executive experience. I think it's being the mayor of the community here in Johnson County, uh, running a meeting, setting an agenda, seeing it through to fruition. Um, I'm a Johnson County native as well and, um, I appreciate that I'm raising two young kids here in Johnson County.
Thank you very much. I used to say another minute, so there's a rule following. Charlotte?
Yes.
Uh, what do you believe most distinguishes you from your opponent's experience?
I think my broad, um, background experience, I was a general contractor again in the eighties, nineties and two thousands. I was, I, I didn't know of any other women in, in, in the construction industry as a general contractor. Uh, I was out on job sites. I, I mean, I, I, it was not, it was not an issue at all. I mean, I showed leadership in, in, in that capacity. Also, my experience as being a representative for the twenty-seventh district. Prior to that, I was the chairman of the third congressional district for the Republican Party. So I have a broad background in business. I have a broad background in the political arena. I am the mother of five. My youngest daughter is adopted. She came to my office when she was ten. And I will tell you that she taught me a tremendous amount. And she's now twenty-five and she's successful and it's just, it's just been a joy to have her a part of our family. So my family experience, my business experience, my political experience, I know, I know the players in Topeka. I know how to communicate with them and I will be, I promise you that I will work hard for this community because I love Johnson County. This is my home. This is my children's home. This is my grandchildren's home.
Thank you. Shirley, uh, you're next. What, what do you believe distinguishes you most from your opponents in this race?
Thank you. Um, well, I believe that, um, I am, I, I'm a business owner. I, uh, grew up in Johnson County. I've been very committed to civic, um, responsibilities here. I've, I've been involved. In fact, I was joking around with a friend saying I've been through every leadership program in the chambers except for two or three. So I'm very committed to, um, give back to my community. I feel like I have the organizational skills, the listening skills that I can bring to the table. I also feel like I can work across the line. I don't believe in a lot of smoke. I believe in let's sit down, let's figure out the problems. And even though we don't agree, let's try to figure out a best possible solution. I've been criticized for having those meetings, but to me, I think it's important and I will continue doing that if I'm elected your chair.
Thank you, Ken. You can bring us on on this one. What distinguishes you from the other candidates?
I think it's pretty easy and straightforward. I am a credentialed CPA. I've kept my credentials throughout my entire career. And it shows up in how I make decisions, how I look at after the interests of people that are, that I, uh, have some influence over. You will find a thoughtful decision-maker here. I've been successful, I told you earlier, in the private sector. I've been incredibly successful in the public sector. I'm the only one that has that kind of success in both sectors where I've actually got more for fewer dollars. Can you believe that? That, that people think that's an oxymoron. It is, it is not. You can do it with thoughtful leadership. I've got a lifetime of serving my community. Dozens of things that I've done in the Johnson County community. Uh, so we've given scholarships to a number of people who were first-generation college graduates, just like, just like me. We try to support people where we can make a difference, my wife and I do. And, uh, bless her, she's got a heart of gold. She's a Jayhawk, but, uh, I'm a, I'm a wildcat and it, it makes a pretty good pair.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to the closing comments now. We're going to do this in reverse order of the opening comments. So Ken, I'm going to kick it back to you for a closing comment. Uh, you know, again, it's one minute, two minutes, whatever at this point. But, 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 but if the stop sign does come up.
I'm just honored to be asked to give a closing comment. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So Johnson County will always, will always be the place where people want to come for a job, just like I did. Raise a family, just like I did, find good, good opportunities, uh, to, to educate their kids, just like I did for my kids. And wouldn't you know, eventually retire where I'm going to be here and before too many years. We want to keep it that way. We're going to think long-term. We're going to think strategically. We're going to think about all the issues that go into that. It's not a superficial decision-making process. We need to think long-term. That goes back to the rural development con, uh, uh, rural development, uh, plan that I talked about earlier. It goes to the development that we've heard about this afternoon that's going on in the western part of the county. We've got some phenomenal opportunities here. I think, and a lot of people think, we need somebody who's got some proven experience to make that happen. I've been a business executive. I've been a public servant. I've, uh, been doing public service throughout the whole process. I want you to come out on August second and tell your friends, vote for Ken Seltzer. Please, please also go to my, uh, website, kenseltzerforchair.com. I'd appreciate it. And like I've said before, we've got some really cute family pictures there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shirley, you're next.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to say my grandchildren. Thank you. Well, I'm gonna say my grandchildren are a lot cuter, so we'll have to. Our county has experienced significant success. It is in order to continue, it's gonna take all of us working together. And that's what I'm gonna bring to the table. As your county chair, I will work with all of you to maintain and improve the quality of life while watching your tax dollars spent. I deeply respect the citizens of Johnson County, even if we disagree. I respect other local officials because it takes all of us to prosper. I respect our professional county staff, our city staff that provide information that helps make better decisions and execute those policies by the commission. I have a proven track record of collaboration and getting things done. I have made a commitment to be the county chair, and I give you my word that I will do the best job I can. I am not a career politician. This is the second race that I've had. But I'm very committed to Johnson County. For these reasons, with my background and my experience of owning and operating and also the um, the volunteer work that I've done, I believe that I'm the best candidate to serve your next county chair. Please go to my website, Alabram for Chair. You can see the questions that I've had answered, my endorsements. I would really appreciate your vote on August fourth. And no matter what you do, you need to get out and vote. So we need to have you both. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Charlotte?
Well, I would prefer that you vote for me on August second. So um, I'll just give you an example. When I was sworn in in January of twenty twenty-one, we were in the middle of the uh mask mandates and shutdowns and this, that and the others. And I, I was, I was inundated with emails from people all across the county. I answered at least ninety-five percent of those emails. I, I, hundreds, hundreds. But my attitude is, is that there's a job in front of me and I go and I do it. And I, and it was my responsibility to respond to these people, to give them hope. I would say, this, this will end. We're working on this. Keep your shoulder to the wheel. Come to the board and county commissioner meetings. We need your voice. And then I started getting responses back. Charlotte, you're the only commissioner that's answering emails. And I was going, well, that's really strange. And then I found out that the legal department had advised that you shouldn't respond to emails because then it's discoverable. Well, what do I care if it's discoverable? Because I'm extremely consistent with my message. And so that is my interaction with people. My message of hope, my message of conservatism. I am the conservative in this race. And I will bring my philosophy of conservatism into the daily functions of this county, which means that I will look at every dollar. I will respect the fact that this is taxpayers' dollars and that it caused pain to have to pay this and that we have to have the biggest bank for, for every buck. And an example, the library for wants to spend fifty-five million dollars for a new library at Antioch and Hundred and Fifty-first Street. We don't want this new library. There is no reason for this expenditure. And that is the type of attitude that I am going to bring to this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Mike, for the final words.
Well, Matt, thank you very much. Appreciate you sacrificing some billable hours. You know, I always forget to mention Hush Blackwell in these conversations, but you know, I appreciate fellow women council. Thank you. Uh, and I want to thank the members of Johnson County Public Policy Council. It's a great representation of partnership of these five thousand businesses working together to really make this a better community for us all. And so I thank all of you for participating and for everybody watching online. Thank you for taking some of your time to learn more about the candidates in this race because that's what democracy is about. We want more people to be able to participate. And we're gonna choose better leaders when more people are informed, more people participate in the process. Uh, and I think we, uh, I want to thank my fellow candidates as well. Uh, because I think we've done a nice job of showing some clear differences between us. Uh, and Johnson County's got a choice. You know, the leaders that we choose and the leader that we choose as chair is gonna set the tone and priorities for our community. It's gonna be our representative to the core four. It's gonna be that bully pulpit for us to the state house. Johnson County's a great place to live, work and retire and raise a family. It's not guaranteed. The leaders that we choose and the policies that they put into place will have a huge impact on Johnson County's future. I'm the candidate in this race that has real-world executive experience in lowering property taxes, in fully funding a police force, in expanding that police force with innovative uh opportunities like a K-nine unit or like a mental health co-responder. I'm also the candidate that's within and for the business community in Johnson County and the metropolitan region. I'm the only candidate in this race that has publicly stated that he believes in a woman's right to make her own healthcare decisions. So I believe that there's a clear choice in this race. I'd ask you to go to mikeforjoko.com and ask you to make a plan to vote for Mike Kelly on or before August second. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to just briefly thank our candidates for participating. Uh, you know, you're the backup moderator today. And I want to thank you for your willingness to serve Johnson County. Uh, thank you to the community college for having us as both members. And again, to make a final reminder, the candidates have begun. And for those who want to vote on election today, Tuesday, August second. Thank you.